Good evening. I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order on this President's Day of Monday, February 19th of 2024, if you would be so kind to stand for the invocation as well followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Fathers, we come to you tonight, first of all, Lord, we want to give you thanks for the way you've allowed Lee County to grow, Lord, to build. And, Lord, as we do business tonight, hear more possible projects, Lord, we thank you for that. For our board members not here tonight, Lord, it was sick and body, Lord, we just ask you to be with them and comfort them. And, Lord, as we go about the businesses in this county, Lord, let us line up with what you see and say first of all, Lord, and after that, Lord, we do your will. We praise and honor you for tonight, Father, and Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the agenda in front of you. I'm going to ask that you look at the approval or consent agenda, but before you get to the consent agenda, we're going to remove 2F, and we'll be removing 2F from the consent agenda. Any other additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, nobody has any 5B, if we can move that to consent?
5B is the CSLFRF Grant Project Ordinance Amendment Number Four. Any questions on that, Madam Attorney?
No, sir.
Motion has been made to move 4B to consent agenda?
4B or 5B?
I'm sorry, 5B. I'm sorry. I misread it. Thank you, sir. Any other changes to the agenda? Seeing there are none, there is a motion to move item 5B from old business to the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving right along. We do have one public comment. No, I'll take that back. We had a public comment. It got erased, so we have no public comments. All right. We do have four public hearings. So we will start out with the first one, item number 4A, zoning map amendment, rezoning application in Staffordport. David Montgomery, sir.
Chairman and county commissioners, before you is a request for rezoning from Michael Cranford for 3.38 plus or minus acres of two tracts of land addresses 2909 Jefferson-Davis Highway from Highway Commercial to Light Industrial. The applicant intends to operate a light manufacturing business and has submitted this zoning map amendment for your consideration. This is a standard general use rezoning request as opposed to a conditional rezoning request. Therefore, no site plans, subdivision plans, or building plans are required as part of this rezoning. As you can see behind you, the location of the two tracts of land off a US Highway One, which is about 1,000 linear feet south from Hickory House Road intersection. And there's an aerial for your reference as well. The property is currently zoned Highway Commercial. The HC zoning district is used to accommodate uses that depend upon a large flow of traffic and convenient access, such as retailing of durable goods, the provision of commercial services to industrial areas, and the provision of services to tourists. As far as the proposed zoning, the Light Industrial District is established to provide for areas that contain a mix of light manufacturing uses, office park and limited retail and services, service uses that service the industrial uses in an attractive business park setting with proper screening and buffering, all compatible with adjoining uses. LI zones should be located so as to have direct access to or within proximity to major or minor thoroughfares. And just to note, there is a list of permitted uses for this zoning district included within the agenda for your reference. In terms of adjacent zoning, which is sort of the burgundy color, is the Highway Commercial, so that's to the north and some to the south. In terms of directly south to the subject property, it's actually got three different zoning districts, Highway Commercial, Light Industrial, and Residential Agricultural, which is the pink color. And then to the east and the west are RA residential agricultural uses as well. In terms of the long-range plan, this is identified as countryside, which is intended for application to those portions of the county located outside of the urban service area, where agricultural uses and undeveloped lands are the most prominent elements of the landscape. Land within the countryside place type is intended to be preserved in its current state for the foreseeable future. Additional information from the land use plan is provided in your package. Transportation, approximately 130 feet of frontage of the property is along US Highway One with a right-of-way of 150 feet. As of 2019, the average daily traffic and approximate location of this property is 26,000 vehicles per day. Staff recommendation, although the long-range plan designation for this site is countryside, staff recommends that the subject property be rezoned from HC to Light Industrial due to its unique location next to a major highway and a portion of the adjacent property to the south. It's already zoned Light Industrial, and because the type of buildings appropriate for small-scale industrial manufacturing use are already on site. And I'll pause there for any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Montgomery. Commissioner Sharp?
No, I don't have any.
Commissioner Reeves?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Warbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
No question.
Commissioner Lovick, all the way down there?
I'm asleep.
All right. No questions from us. We're ready to start the public hearing. Amy, do I need to read the disclosure?
Yes, please.
Sorry. Should have had it out. Does anyone here have any conflict of interest involving this public hearing regarding the rezoning request?
Please call.
Please identify yourself. Seeing that there are none, we can move on. I'm going to open the public hearing on the zoning map amendment for the US One Jefferson-Davis Highway 3.38. Public hearing is now open. If you wish to speak on behalf of the public hearing, please come forward. Please make sure that you state your name as well as your address for the record.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lucas Cranford. I actually own the property in consideration tonight. We own a company that develops and manufactures electronics. We do not produce any components that are hazardous to the environment. So anything that we produce is not hazardous. There's no hazardous materials or waste that we produce with our manufacturing. We sit on several advisory boards. We sit on the advisory board for the community college. We sit on the advisory board for the BCA. We sit on several advisory boards for the community college and local companies. So we're very in tune to the local environment. My wife and I are both from here, and we just, we produce companies, and we build a product that just builds electronics for other environments that we support from the local community. So anything that we build, there's no hazardous materials that come out of our property. And we just hope that we can provide good opportunities to support the community college, their environmental, like, anything else that we can produce of them, we hope that we can produce out of that, that we give good opportunities for our communities to thrive herefore.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. Cranford?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thanks.
Commissioner Warbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in support of the rezoning? Anyone opposed to the rezoning? Anyone in support or opposing the rezoning? Going once, going twice. The public hearing on this rezoning request is closed. Moving on to the next public hearing. Amy McNeil, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to recuse myself from the next two items on the agenda due to working for planning and development with the city.
Motion's been made to recuse Commissioner Sharp from the discussion as well as the vote on this particular item regarding planning. Any further question?
I think it's the next two, so it's for 4B and C.
Okay, for 4B and 4C. Got it. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. You're recused, sir.
Thank you.
I won't ask questions of you.
Talkies, buddy.
Okay, Amy, we're good.
Good evening, commissioners, planning boards, staff, and citizens. This information begins on page 154 of your agenda packet. A bit of background information before we start. Near the end of last year, staff discussed this text amendment with the City of Sanford City Council at a workshop as a way to make major subdivision plat review and the approval process more efficient. Most of the large subdivisions are within the jurisdiction of the City of Sanford, hence the discussion with that particular jurisdiction. The city council was amenable to this change, therefore, staff presented it to the Joint Planning Commission in November of 2023 as the first step in the UDO text amendment process. The JPC recommended that the text amendment move forward with the public hearing process. And for your information, your JPC reps are Chairman Smith, Commissioner Lovick, and the Lee County Planning Board Chairman, Dave Turner. Regulations regarding major subdivision preliminary plat and approval. State law allows subdivision regulation final decisions on major subdivision preliminary plats to be made by any of the following: a governing board, which is what you are as the commissioners; the governing board on recommendation from a designated body; a designated planning board; a technical review committee; or other designated body or staff person. No public hearing is required for the review and approval of a subdivision plat. Our current plat review process is as follows. Currently, a major subdivision preliminary plat is reviewed by the Sanford Lee County Broadway Technical Review Committee, or TRC, to verify compliance with the UDO subdivision regulations and all applicable policies and regulations, and then it is placed on an agenda for review and recommendation by the planning board. The planning board recommendation is then presented to the governing board, which is the county commissioners, for a vote. So this is our current process. The TRC reviews it for technical specifications, then it's placed on a planning board agenda for a recommendation, then it's placed on the county commissioners' agenda for a vote. Once again, there's no public hearing required for a preliminary plat, and that's the way we currently do it. The proposed plat review process is as follows. This amendment would allow major subdivision plats to be reviewed for compliance with the UDO subdivision regulations, and once again, all applicable policy and regulations by the technical review committee, and then it would allow the technical review committee to actually approve the plat. The plat would not be placed on a planning board agenda for a recommendation, nor would the Board of Commissioners consider the planning board recommendation and vote on the plat. If the existing zoning allows the development of the site in the manner proposed, and if the subdivision design complies with the applicable standards, the TRC would review it and approve it. Then the planning board and the commissioners would receive a monthly report regarding plat approvals so that they are aware of new major subdivisions. And once again, to reiterate, currently, the TRC reviews it for compliance with the UDO subdivision development standards, such as lot size, minimum building setbacks, things of that nature. Then it's placed on a planning board agenda for a recommendation, and then it goes to the commissioners for a vote. Typically, if the subdivision design complies with the subdivision regulations, you don't have grounds to deny it. And in my tenure here, you've never denied a subdivision plat that complied with the regulations. The proposal is that it be reviewed by the TRC for the technical compliance, minimum lot size, minimum building setbacks, things of that nature, and then the technical review committee actually approves it. So it doesn't get placed on a planning board agenda for recommendation, nor does it get placed on a commissioner's agenda for a vote. Now Sanford's response to this text amendment. Sanford held a joint public hearing for this amendment in November, with one person from the development community speaking in favor and no one speaking in opposition. At the public hearing, the planning board convened, oh, I'm sorry, after the public hearing, the planning board convened and recommended by unanimous vote that this amendment be approved. Topics of discussion included that always seemed awkward, that the boards were reviewing a plat that they really could not recommend be denied if it complied with the UDO development standards, and that this would increase the efficiency of the review and approval process for plats. And in December, the city council received the recommendation of the planning board on this text amendment and voted to approve this amendment by unanimous vote. At this time, staff is providing information to you, the Lee County Commissioners and the Lee County Planning Board, so that you may consider whether or not Lee County is interested in pursuing this new review and approval method for major subdivision preliminary plats. Once again, this is an option that is available to you to take an item off your agenda, but if you're not comfortable with this, we can keep things the way that they are. Are there any questions?
Questions for Amy. Commissioner Reeves?
Tell me how it helps us.
It simply takes one item off of your agenda, so it's less that you have to consider.
That's not enough, but no, that's fine.
Okay.
How much time are you talking about here, saving?
With regard to the, I'm sorry, with regard to the development community, approximately...
Yeah, so you want this plat approved, you're going to go to, you're going to come to us, right? First, you got to go to the planning board.
TRC.
Right. Well, TRC is always involved. It doesn't change.
Right. TRC is always involved.
So then you go to the planning board, and then you got to come for us. So is that three weeks, two weeks?
Approximately three to four weeks faster for a developer. I think in the city, the city council meets approximately four times a month, right? They have two workshops and two regular meetings. And their agendas are a bit more lengthy than yours because they have more development in the City of Sanford. And they considered this as getting one item off their agenda, that if it met the development standards, they typically are legally bound to review and approve anyway. But if you, of course, you have less development in the county, and so if you're not comfortable with this, I mean, I'm simply providing the option.
No, I think that you answered my question this last time. It helps the developer more than anything.
It does expedite the process for the developer. You are correct.
That stands out good.
Okay.
So because the next amendment you have here is extending the time.
Mm-hmm.
So you want to speed up time, then you want to extend time. So I don't see the rush at this point in time. You see what I'm saying? Like I say, we want to speed up time for the developers, per se, but then they want extension in time. You want to go from two years to five years.
Yes.
So it doesn't look like they're in any hurry.
Should we discuss the next text amendment during that public hearing?
No, you know, I'm just throwing that out.
Yes, sir.
The rest of the commissioners know what I'm talking about, right? So...
Yes.
Commissioner Warbeck?
Who sits on the TRC?
The technical review committee is comprised of representatives from the planning department, the city engineering department, the Lee County Transportation Director with regard to school buses. We have representatives from NC DOT. We have representatives from Sanford Lee County Building Inspections Department, Lee County Environmental Health, and I can get you the specifics on all that if you'd like it.
No, I thought it would be kind of good to know for...
Fifty-one members.
Huh?
Fifty-one members.
Fifty-one? I'm sorry?
Fifty-one members?
No, sir. No, ma'am. I can get you a list of the members if you would like those. But they're representatives from various departments.
Okay. And then I know you had said, once it gets from the TRC planning board, we're kind of, for the most part, legally bound to approve it, and you had stated that, as far as you knew, we had not approved one. But I'm just curious on how many of the preliminary plats have come to the planning board and then also have not been changed or have been asked to changed by the planning board's recommendations? Does that make sense?
I...
Yeah. Okay.
Are you asking how many plats have gone to the planning board, and maybe they asked the developer to make a change?
Yes.
I don't have those numbers, but I can get them for you.
But there's been more than one that you know of, correct?
Probably, yes, ma'am. Where a planning board said, well, would you mind doing this? Would you mind putting a fence up, that kind of thing? Something that a developer doesn't have to do per the UDO, but because the planning board asked, the developer responded.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
With Commissioner Warbeck's statement, is that something that when they're looking at it, in the speed-up process, will they look at it also, and can they give recommendations, or is it a straight?
It is a straight review and approval. Either it meets the technical specifications of the UDO and the other technical specifications, say, for instance, it has the appropriate sized water line if it's going to connect to city water. It doesn't, you know, it meets DOT specifications. If it meets those technical standards, it will be reviewed and approved by the TRC at that same meeting.
So in that standards, though, they have certain buffers and things in place?
They do, yes, sir. It is, you use the ordinance as a checklist.
Right.
And it complies or it doesn't.
Okay. And in time-wise, we would have to have a meeting like this. The planning board would have to have theirs. They come back with recommendations. So really, two meetings of ours, it would save time on.
Well, we don't have a public hearing, so it would be placed on a planning board agenda for recommendation, and then on the county commissioners' agenda for a vote. So you would actually see it one time. That's the way you do it now.
Any other questions of Amy?
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
So how many members are on TRC? I was told this morning that at least 51 people are copied or something in that area.
I'm not sure who gave you that information, but I'd have to, Thomas Miresh is our TRC coordinator. I'd have to check with Thomas, but it's probably representatives from 10 to 12 different agencies.
I don't disagree with that, but when I ask, who gets this information, I guess I was told at least 51 different.
Oh, who gets the TRC agendas, perhaps?
Yeah.
In the past, I know we used to email them to people. I'm not sure if that's a service we still provide because we do post it on the City of Sanford website. So, and that's how the various newspapers get their information, and the development community who likes to keep an eye on this. So it's posted out there for everyone to see.
Thank you.
And just to add to that, it's in our manager's report on a monthly basis.
Oh, I see it every month. That wasn't my question. I don't know how many members there are.
How many other folks? Okay.
But I can get you that information along with Commissioner Warbeck's number of changes in the plats that have been approved over the last five years?
You really don't have to. If it's been more than one, I would kind of, that was all I needed really to know.
And typically, those are what you see, is maybe a fence makes the board feel a little more comfortable if there was a thin buffer, or perhaps they want evergreen buffer so that there's year-round screening, things like that. So sometimes, when it comes in front of a board, it does put a bit of pressure on the developer to, they tend to do what you ask, let's put it that way. Whereas with the TRC, we're only going to go by, does it meet the technical specifications of the ordinance?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions, Amy, before I open the public hearing?
Was there any concerns from the city side on, as far as buffers and things like that? Were there no concerns from their part?
No, sir, because currently, there are certain standards in the UDO, but the city is also aware that planning staff is working on updating the subdivision regulations, and you will see those very soon. And we've had a lot of workshops on what new development standards, what buffers and things like that will be implemented in the new subdivision regulations.
Would that also affect the county subdivisions also?
I think it's going to affect the city more than it's going to affect the county because the zoning districts involved are really the smaller lot sizes that are for the city. But we can take a look at that. Buffers are not typically required for subdivisions, just so you know. It's usually backyard to backyard.
Right. Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Amy. I'll open this up to the public hearing. The public hearing is now open on the UDO text amendment revising the approval process for the preliminary major subdivision plats. If there's anyone who wishes to speak for, please come forward. Please state your name and address. Come on, Mr. Steve. Okay. Anyone opposing? Please come forward. State your name and address.
Good evening, commissioners. David Smoke, SMOKA, 96 Northridge Trail. I'm trying not to speak at every meeting, but on this item of interest, I did want to come up and express my opinion. I appreciate the work of the county employees to try to streamline the process. I've been retired for 14 years, so I don't claim to be an expert in anything anymore, but once upon a time, I was pretty well-trained in a management technique called Lean Six Sigma. Lean Six Sigma is designed to measure processes, try to eliminate the waste, try to streamline, try to make them, you know, more efficient and more accurate. So the idea of removing the commissioners from the approval process for major developments, even if most of them wanted to be applied by the city, would be a good idea if the approval authority, the commissioners, were basically a rubber stamp. And I agree with Amy. Like she said, they are always approved, but what I have seen from, not just at county meetings, but the occasional city meetings that I'll come to, when these developments are being proposed and discussed at the public level, even if there isn't a public hearing, you'll have a lot of citizens that will come up, and they will give you their opinion on the proposed development. And I've seen the developers come up here, waiting for your approval, and a little bit of horse trading will come on. You know, maybe a commissioner would say, well, how about putting sidewalks on both sides of the road? How about staying the fence? You know, as she said, the walls, or, you know, doing other little things to kind of sweeten your approval process. That adds value. By taking yourself out of the approval process and leaving it at the technical review committee, I feel it will gradually lead to a process of the bare minimum. You know, the developers will know exactly what the UDO says, and that's exactly what they'll do. As you said, the technical review committee will make sure that they've checked the blocks on every little detail, and as long as it meets the minimum standards, it'll get approved. And like I said, I've seen where going at this level, the developers will kick forward with a better project, in my mind. So that's why I oppose removing yourselves out of the approval process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else opposed? Anyone else for? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now over on the UDO text amendment revising approval process for preliminary subdivision plat. Next item on the agenda is the UDO text amendment revision of time period for preliminary major subdivision plats. And Amy McNeil is back, and we were approaching this subject the last time around.
Yes, sir. And I apologize, I'm just getting over a cold, which is why I sound a little funny. This information begins on pages, oh, page 168 of your agenda packet. And a bit of background information again. Near the end of last year, staff discussed this text amendment with the Sanford City Council to work text amendment with the Sanford City Council at a workshop, due to concern expressed by the development community regarding the current two-year approval period for a preliminary major subdivision Platt not being long enough to secure all the various approvals required to develop the project. Most of the large subdivisions are within the jurisdiction of Sanford, hence the discussion with that particular jurisdiction. The City Council was amenable to this change, therefore, staff presented it to the JPC in November, and then the JPC recommended that this text amendment move forward with the public hearing process. This UDO text amendment would extend the original approval, approval period for major subdivision preliminary Platts from two years to five years, with two years allowed for all subsequent extensions. Also, any Platt that was approved between January 1 of 2021 and December 31 of 2023 would automatically receive an extension not to exceed five years. Sanford held a joint public hearing for this amendment in November, with one person from the development community speaking in favor and no one speaking in opposition. After the public hearing, the Planning Board convened and recommended by unanimous vote that this amendment be approved. Topics of discussion included the large size of new subdivisions, and that more information was required from the developer these days in order to secure all the various approvals required. For example, the City of Sanford now requires sewer studies to determine that needed improvements for the area. On December 5, the City Council received the recommendation of the Planning Board and voted to approve the amendment by unanimous vote. At this time, staff is providing the information to the county Commissioners and Planning Board, so that you may consider whether or not Lee County is interested in extending the original approval period for major subdivision preliminary Platts from two years to five years, with two years allowed for all subsequent extensions. Are there any questions?
Questions for Amy. Commissioner Lovick.
Amy, would you elaborate? I know during the Joint Planning Committee, we discussed this. Talk about the buying and selling of land and stuff, the reason that you're looking at the five years instead of the two.
The City of Sanford especially is having a lot of preliminary Platts that don't secure all the approvals that they need within the two-year time period, and so they're having to be placed on agendas again. And the Boards will say, "Well, didn't we just see this Platt?" Because the approval expired. These subdivisions are now huge. They're eight hundred, nine hundred lots, and two years simply isn't enough time to secure all the approvals needed by the North Carolina Department of, of Environmental Quality, by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, if there are wetlands involved, things of that nature. There are also off-site sewer studies that are required now to see if any sewer lines in the area need to be upgraded at the developer's expense. So as the projects get larger, the approval process takes longer. So both the developers and the city Board members were amenable to extending the time period from two years to five years, so that it would allow, so they wouldn't have as many preliminary Platts coming before them, which were basically the same design. It's just, for whatever reason, they couldn't get it developed within two years.
Right. How often would you say that happened in the county process?
In the county? Not very often. It depends on the market. Now, a while back, when the market dropped out, you had more coming back to you that weren't finished. But in this particular case, my guess is you'd probably have one every three years at the most, and in this market, you might not even have one, because everything sells that quick.
Right.
Your subdivisions just tend to be smaller, because they have, they're served by private septic systems.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Commissioner, connect.
What happens if, before, before their extension, the UDO changes? Do they have to comply to the new UDO before they get the extension?
If the preliminary Platt does expire, five years, and the subdivision...
No, 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 no. Or two years now. Now they're going to apply for an extension.
Yes.
And now the UDO has changed before their extension time?
Yes.
So after two years, you approved them for A.
Right.
They didn't get it done, but now they're going for an extension, but the UDO has changed. Do they have to meet the new requirements, or they can still go with the old?
They have to ask you to, whether or not they have to meet the old requirements or the new requirements. You would have the authority to say, "Hey, you started with sidewalk on one side of the street, so you can finish the subdivision with sidewalk on one side of the street." Or you could say, "The UDO has changed. Now we require it on both sides of the street, so you have to do that."
That'd be part of the extension then?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck.
Commissioner Lovick asked, one of the questions was, how many of them have in the county been affected?
Yeah.
Um, why, and what's funny is, on my notes, I had, "Why not three years?", and you said there was one that it, it was maybe, it was maybe the three-year mark is when they...
And I will tell you, five years is not a magic number. It's just something that we discussed at the JPC and with developers, and that people thought was reasonable and fair, but there is no, it, it's not a magic number. It's not, therefore, a definitive specific reason.
Would they be amendable to three years instead of five?
The city went with five.
I, I understand what the city went with.
But you could, you could say three, if you wanted to.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves.
Yeah, I was going to ask if, if, for example, we stayed at two, that would strictly be for the county?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm looking at proposed residential units here right now. Nine hundred ninety, eight hundred ninety-three, nine hundred, seven hundred and thirty-five. Do you know if all these tracks are being annexed?
I do not. Are you, what, may I ask what you're looking at?
It's just a map of the proposed development. For example, the one for nine hundred ninety might, oh, you got one.
So anything that's in the green is in the corporate limits of the City of Sanford, and it looks like, say, for instance, that eight ninety-three, that's a big circle, but that is actually covering up green. That's in corporate limits of the City of Sanford. One that I see that's in the county, to your far right, you see a hundred and thirty?
Yes.
That's the subdivision that's proposed for development on Buckhorn Road. So that one's in Lee County. Then there's one that says thirty-three, that's north of Broadway. That one's in Lee County. But the majority of them that are touching the green are proposed in the corporate city limits.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Amy? Seeing none, I'm prepared to open the public hearing on the UDO Tax Amendment revision of time period for preliminary major subdivision Platts. Public hearing is now open.
Thank you for doing that.
Anyone speaking on behalf of the text amendment? Please come forward. Is Mr. Malloy still here? You're the expert here in this regard. Would you like to speak on behalf of it, sir?
Thank you for the offer, but...
Okay, sir. I do have David Smoke as well, Northridge Trail. Come on up, sir. State your name and your address again.
Taylor.
David Smoke, 96 Northridge Trail. And not to be the Negative Nancy, but I oppose this change as well. Going back to Lean Six Sigma, what you will be doing is you'd be expanding, it's called work in progress, the backlog. I see the Commissioners have a map, I think, of existing home developments and numbers already approved in the county. And that's a valuable tool for the county and council members to maintain when they are approving more and more development, as, you know, people choose to live in our, in our county. By extending it to five years, I understand some of the pressure's taken off the developers, but when they come to you or the city for approval of these projects, they should be ready to execute. I understand that there are studies and everything that need to be done after approval. I think that there is a way that an automatic extension can still be incorporated. There was an extension in the existing UDO that says, you know, two years and extensions may be granted afterwards. The, the text amendment that they're proposing, you know, says two-year amendments can be approved afterwards. And that's, that's wonderful. It's, it can even be delegated to the Technical Review Committee level. You know, just keeping eyes on these projects, either by you, the public representatives, or the, the government employees, being able to keep an eye on the changing standards, changing needs of the community, I think is important. By approving this change as submitted, it's, it's extending these projects to five to seven to nine years. You know, we hear about these developments all the time in the media. We understand it takes a while to get them going, but after a little while, you hear about it, and then years and years go by, and you never see anything, and you kind of forget about it. But there is a lot of, uh, work to do on these projects. Once again, I'm not an expert on it. I just think that maintaining the oversight at the Commissioner, or even if you delegate it down to the, the Technical Review Committee level, every couple of years, two or three years, would be a better compromise than this automatic blanket retroactive approval of the existing projects at the five years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for? Anyone else opposed? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now over regarding the UDO Tax Amendment revision of time period for preliminary major subdivisions. Do you have a room set aside for the Planning Board to go to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please move forward. We'll excuse the Planning Board. And we do thank you very much for the work you're putting in for the county. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, is a public hearing on Project Bio Bloom, starting with... Go ahead, sir. I wasn't sure if I got...
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. I'll present this item in collaboration with Attorney Parrish for consideration and answer any questions before the hearing is opened up. Project Bio Bloom is a pharmaceutical research and product manufacturing company, considering locating in Sanford, Lee County. The project represents a net new taxable investment of at least one hundred ninety million dollars, which may be more or less during the seven-year life of the project, and which investment will be made over a period of time and on a phased basis. The county intends to make seven annual cash grant incentives based on a percentage of net new taxable value of the facility. The amount of each year's grant is as follows. Year one and two will be calculated based on eighty percent of the ad valorem taxes paid by the company. Years three and four will be calculated based on seventy percent of the ad valorem taxes paid by the company. Year five, six, and seven will be sixty percent of the ad valorem taxes paid by the company. Lee County anticipates the amount of cash incentives will be four million, six hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars, which may be more or less if the company's investments are more or less in any given year, depending on the company's net new taxable investment. However, no payment will be above the stated percentages. The company will hire one hundred two permanent new full-time employees with an average annual wage of at least ninety-one thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars over the seven-year length of the project. A public hearing notice ran in the Sanford Herald on February 8, 2024.
Questions for Jimmy regarding this project? Commissioner Sharp, you're back in.
Yeah. I understand what we agreed to do for this company. We didn't have to go that far with the incentive. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. That's, that's all.
Commissioner Reeves?
Okay.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Just for my clarification, on the incentive, though, they still have to meet the normal, keep full-time employees, all the other checklist that everyone else that has some type of incentive has to meet, right?
Absolutely. It's a performance-based incentive.
Okay.
They have indicated to the community, to our staff, what their intentions are, and they must meet the investment requirements. The way that process would work, they would make that investment, they would file those taxes, and we would have a record of the real estate portion of that. They would make their investments in machinery and equipment. They would file those taxes and make those tax payments before any payment was made to them. And the hiring requirements would be documented via the forms that they submit to the state for their unemployment tax reporting. So it is a performance-based incentive, and if they do not meet the performance requirements, they do not receive the incentive.
And I just want to make sure I heard it correctly. A hundred and two full-time, they have seven years to get up to the hundred and two, or they're going to be close to the one oh two year one?
They have indicated a hiring schedule
Okay.
that would reach that one hundred two employees within the first three years.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, connect.
No local competing business?
They are in a similar sector to two of our major existing employers. I and my staff have spoken with those employers about this project and received a favorable response from them. This industry, as we've discussed before, does experience some benefit from the cluster effect of having multiple employers in this space, in a community that invests significant amounts in training for those employees and the local talent pipeline. And we're in a region with this level of wages where the employees would travel from some distance to work here in our county if needed. So the existing employers actually see additional folks working in this space as a potential benefit, both from a talent standpoint and potential supply chain standpoint, based on some of the products that this company might be manufacturing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Lovick.
I think when folks hearing these numbers, you know, says, "We're going to give those a cash incentive of four, about four point seven million, but they're going to be bringing a hundred and ninety million", would you, or the county manager, tell them, tell folks how that works? Because when they hear that number cash incentive, it, it's not really, "We take county money, give it, they give us money, and we give part of theirs back", is it? So could it, would that be a good time to do that?
I'll be glad to try to explain that. So, yes, they have to pay their taxes into the county before we pay anything out. So in a year where we would be looking at, the first year, they would pay in a total tax of three hundred forty-one thousand, three hundred eighty dollars, of then, we would turn around and potentially give them back eighty percent of that
Right.
as a cash incentive. But we get our money first, and if it has to, it's prorated. If they don't meet that full investment, it's based on what they do pay in tax-wise. If they don't make their full number of employees that are scheduled that first year, then it's, you know, we would adjust that also.
Yeah.
We receive before they receive.
I just think it's important for taxpayers to hear that the county doesn't write them a check and say, "Come on in here", you know. It's, it's, they pay it, and we give part of it back.
The percentage of that is supposed to go towards tax reduction, too, isn't it?
That's right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And to our capital reserve, for our policy.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Jimmy?
... as in for the citizens. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any further questions for Jimmy? Okay. I wish to open the public hearing for Project Bio Bloom. Public hearing is now open. If you wish to speak on behalf of the Project Bio Bloom, please step forward and give us your name as well as your address.
My name is Jimmy Randolph. I live at 3405 Windmere Drive here in Sanford and Lee County. I would strongly encourage you, in my role as a citizen and also in my role as CEO of Saga, to consider approving this incentive for Project Bio Bloom. Should you approve this incentive tonight, and our recruiting efforts prove successful, Project Bio Bloom would be an excellent addition to our business, community, and our community at large, and it would advance the county's economic development mission on several fronts. The new capital investment of one hundred ninety million dollars, we've spoken before about how modern, advanced manufacturing projects achieve highly efficient tax-based expansion, with fewer demands on count... county services than other types of development, generating significant tax revenues which can be utilized to reduce the tax burden on individuals and families, as well as enhancing the quality of public education and other vital human services that are the county's responsibility, as well as investing in important quality of life amenities like parks and libraries. Furthermore, bio manufacturing involves a highly specialized manufacturing environment equipped with cutting-edge technology, making it uniquely capital-intensive among advanced manufacturing operations. Experience also tells us that once companies like Project Bio Bloom make a significant initial investment in a community, if they are successful here, then they are more likely to expand and reinvest in their existing facilities here than to start from scratch elsewhere. Secondly, new jobs. 102 new jobs at more than 175% of the county's current average wage, which is about $51,600, versus 91,000-plus proposed by the company for these jobs. The lowest-paid jobs associated with this project would start at $60,000 annually, and our local community college is already preparing local residents for just these sorts of jobs with their bioprocess technology, associate and applied science degree, and the highly successful biowork certificate program. So these jobs are accessible today to our existing residents here in Lee County. The same training programs that are so vital to the success of our existing industries, Commissioner Connect, will provide a tangible advantage to this company upon starting up, while the company provides even more opportunity for both youth and adult learners here in Lee County who wish to pursue a career in life sciences to earn potentially life-changing wages right here at home. The future impacts of an investment like this will continue to build upon that burgeoning life sciences cluster that we already have experienced, again, thanks to your investments in Saga and in the recruiting process and in our existing industry, and will give us a competitive advantage as we move forward. This project came to us in May of last year as an opportunity, and we had our first site visit in June. They visited 12 communities around North Carolina in June of last year. We stand here today believing that we are the last remaining candidate in North Carolina competing with a candidate in South Carolina. The environment that you have created here for this type of advanced manufacturing opportunity has generated a tremendous amount of momentum and a tremendous amount of credibility that will potentially allow us, if Bio Bloom were to locate here, to continue to attract just these types of high-paying, high-quality, cutting-edge, advanced manufacturing jobs that will benefit our residents well into the future. So I would encourage you strongly tonight to consider this incentive so that we can hopefully convince Bio Bloom to locate here in Sanford and Lee County.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in support? Anyone opposed? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed. Moving on to old business, and just a reminder that we need to waive our policy and vote to approve the resolution.
Motion to waive our policy.
Motion been made to waive our policy to vote and approve the resolution after the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is to approve the resolution and agreement for Project Bio Bloom, authorizing staff to make changes to the name of the business and the agreement after the project has been announced and make any minor changes to the agreement and authorize the chair to sign the agreement. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Motion's been made to approve the resolution and agreement for Project Bio Bloom. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to new business, and just for an oversight on my part, I was supposed to announce the Lee County Youth Council member that's here this evening, and if I could have Amaya Neal Tyser to please stand. Good to see you tonight, Amaya. This is going to be fun. It's going to be a long meeting. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Raleigh Executive Jetport update, and Mr. Hoots is here. Thank you for the hat, sir.
You're very welcome. I'm Bob Hoots, Airport Director for Raleigh Exec Jetport. I appreciate the opportunity to come to you tonight and provide you with a little update on what's going on at the airport. First, I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for all the support and trust that you have allowed the authority in developing and managing our airport. Also, the amount of time that Lisa gets to spend with us on a monthly basis is very, very helpful, and we get the same sort of service from the city as well, so we appreciate that. We also have to make sure that we thank the folks from the General Assembly, who have really helped us out financially, specifically John Salz, Representative Salz. Really, without their help, without your help, without the city's help, Division of Aviation, there's no way that the airport could be what it is. And lastly, I'll talk about our very good and invested Airport Authority, two appointments which you have on that authority along with the city for providing the leadership to keep this organization and keep this facility moving forward. We never look back. I handed out to you a packet that contains a series of four stories that we recently published, where we talk about some of the good things that have happened out there. But really, in the end, it's all about creating capacity, not very much different than what you, Board of Commissioners, are doing with Jimmy and Todd in developing industrial parks, you're creating capacity out there, developing buildings, you're creating capacity, and for us, it's on the aviation side. Business is good out at the airport, as some of you have seen who have actually visited. You know, we talk about in those stories, you know, expanding for everyone. Talk about Family Day, we talk about Young Eagles, we talk about Fort Liberty doing training operations out there, loading on aircraft and then parachuting into Lake Jordan. Just recently, in October, we landed the first electric-powered aircraft to land in North Carolina, and they landed at Raleigh Exec Jetport. And that was to help celebrate the groundbreaking for a charging station for aircraft. We're looking at the future. You know, and you've heard me talk, or you've read stories about the economic impact of the airport. Every two years, NC State, the best university in the world, does a study on what aviation provides for the state of North Carolina, and then individually what all the other airports provide for their communities. For our airport, the impact, the economic impact is $53 million. The impacted jobs are 430 jobs. The operations on an annual basis average 63,000 operations, which is about 172 takeoffs and landings per day. Sometimes we have as many as 400 or 430 per day. That's, I think, was the highest number. Gets quite busy at times. 19 million in personal income, and we have 216 aircraft based at the airport right now. Out of 62 airports, 62 general aviation airports, which is what we have in North Carolina, 300 private airports. Our airport is number one in terms of based aircraft with 216. Over the 20 years that we've been in business, we've completely rebuilt the runway, the taxiway. We've added T-hangers, a new terminal, which is a great front door for the community. We've added a corporate hangar, parking areas for aircraft, ramp for future electric aircraft. As I said, the authority is all about creating capacity. So we can be ready for when that opportunity presents itself. And with everything going on at RDU, with everything going on in Lee County, in this particular area, and the whole triangle, actually, you know, we've got some opportunities that present themselves all along. I'll talk for a moment about some current projects. You know, we're full at capacity on the new corporate Phase One that we built a few years back, so we have all the sites obligated there. Right now, we're designing the next section of that, and that'll take us as far as we can go without crossing some creeks. That will open up opportunities for more, maybe five, six, depending on the size, large box hangers. Large box hangers bring large aircraft, large aircraft have a lot of value that ends up certainly serving the county and the airport very well. We've got an approach clearing project. This is to take down trees or tops of trees that might be getting in the way in the near future of any aircraft that would be trying to land there. We've got applications for eight new box hangers right now at the airport. So by the end of this year, if you drive up there, you'll see a lot of construction going on, and some of which will probably be finished. We're also designing a bypass taxiway. That's in the step to be under construction this spring, so that will also help allow for more aircraft to take off and land while some others are maybe preparing to take off and land. Our largest project, or big project today, and probably what we'll talk about here in the next few minutes, has to do with land acquisition. And I will tell you that while we were doing an update on the airport layout plan, which is something that usually gets done every 10, 15, 20 years, we, you know, that's our opportunity to look back at the history. And we started this in 2017, and we look back to see the kind of activity that we've had, and then we try to look forward to see what we really need to prepare for. You know, we're not sure we need to prepare for a Vinfast or what a Wolf Speed may bring to the airport in terms of business. We don't know what Chatham Park or the Carolina Commercial Park that we have here, what any of those businesses will bring in the future, but we want to be prepared. And if they needed space to either host or house their aircraft, we need to be ready for that. If they want to do, if another company wanted to come in and do some kind of manufacturing related to aviation, we want to be ready for that. And so that's what you do with an airport layout plan. You look back, you see what's happened, and then you put together a plan for the future. The city, of course, at that same time was planning for sewer improvements to serve Moncur, which actually helped us as well, because that was the first time that we actually had public sewer available for us as well. At the same time, regional developers are looking at land in Lee County, seriously. Activity was heating up. All of you know that. You've seen all the applications for the different projects over those last five years. Back when the airport was first being considered for that area, you know, some 1,400 or so acres were really under consideration, and that was nixed back then, and we ended up with 700 acres at that time. In 2000, when we opened up that airport, Dan Swanson moved 27 aircraft to that new location. Today, we have 216, and we add more every day. Recently, after that airport layout plan update in 2017, 2018, we met with the Board of County Commissioners and talked about an overlay district to try and manage at least a concentrated residential development that was being discussed by developers around or in the northern part of the county. We didn't have funds available at that time to purchase property, but with the help of the General Assembly, John Salz, and the support of the Commissioners, the city councils, you know, we were able to receive several grants that will help us buy land identified in the map that I provided for you in the package. That's our land acquisition map. I'll go to that right now. I will begin by telling you that when you're using public dollars to buy a property or to do land acquisition, there are quite a few steps that we have to go through. And I put that checklist in your packet as well. But clearly, we have to identify the lands that we would like to look at and try to add to our current properties. There's an act called the Uniform Act that basically states all the things that we have to do in order to buy property. So if people live on the property, the kinds of things that we have to offer to make sure that we take care of those people if they have to be moved. We go through all kinds of Phase Ones for all the properties, so we get the environmental documentation needed to make sure we're not buying anything that might cause us problems. Surveys if needed. We start out with an appraisal, and then a review appraisal. If that appraisal is more than a million dollars, we've got to do a second appraisal. Once that's reviewed, then to make sure that we're following all the rules for appraising property, it gets reviewed by the Department of Transportation. If there's any relocation involved with that that falls back on the Uniform Act, then we have to make sure that we make those folks eligible for that. Finally, we can make an offer based on those appraisals that have been approved by DOT and the review appraisals, and then we make that offer to the landowners and then start the negotiation. To date, if you look at that map, we have a little bit of an update on that. We actually have all of the property shown here. We have Phase Ones for all of those, so we're in good shape there. We've actually, on Parcel Six and Parcel Ten, we made offers and we closed on those two pieces of properties. We're currently in discussion for Twelve and Thirteen. Twelve has been accepted. We're working on the D right now, and Thirteen, we're in discussions with. We've made offers for that, and we're looking for a counteroffer. All of this property, you know, was, and the owners are at least interested in selling, listening to opportunities that they might have. Parcels Seven, Fourteen, and Fifteen, we just met with those folks last week and started conversations about that property, and they're amenable to selling that property to us. They are waiting on an appraisal for their properties and actually have added a couple of other little sites to what they would like to sell. We are waiting for final appraisals for Parcs Five and Sixteen, and once we get those, we will be able to move forward and make an offer to those property owners. So that's kind of where we are with the land acquisition side of it. You know, and I want to be very clear on this. We have not condemned any property. We do not want to condemn any property or use the right of eminent domain for any of this. The Commissioners, if that ever happens, the Commissioners will not be involved. DOT will not be involved. The City of Sanford will not be involved. But you'll know what we're doing, and that's really, I think, one of the reasons I'm here to tell you that the Airport Authority, when the legislation was passed to establish that, it included a provision that allowed for eminent domain. No one wants to use that, and we're not anywhere near using that, but that is something that we have in our back pocket. So that's kind of where we are on our land acquisition project. It's a big deal. A lot of dollars involved, a lot of boxes that we need to check off to make sure that we do it absolutely correct and with transparency. I also provided for the Board of County Commissioners sort of a layout that the Airport Authority has looked at. We developed it to show how we might be able to utilize some of the properties that we were trying to acquire at this point. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. I will tell you that I still, I know that some of you still have not been up to the airport, and I need to get you up there, and we'll give you a 25-cent tour. And we'd really welcome you up there. I don't know if there are any questions, but thank you for letting me come in and talk to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoots. Questions for Bob? Commissioner Lovick? Commissioner Lovick.
Is there any plans or is it feasible to ever have small passenger flights out of there?
We do not have any current plans, nor do we have anyone that has expressed an interest in what we change this airport to a 139 or a commercial airport like an RDU. Once you get scheduled stops, it changes everything for the airport in terms of security, in terms of life safety kinds of things that have to be in place. So far, you know, we're pretty close to RDU Airport, you know, unless it's a niche airline of some sort and they wanted to come in and pitch it. I don't see this authority at this particular time looking for anything like that. Now, having said that, we do have two charter companies out there today. So if you wanted to jump on an aircraft, maybe pay a little bit more money per seat than you would by going commercial, you could actually do that. And it would be on your schedule, not on someone else's schedule. We do see and have heard about air taxis where you might, again, not have a scheduled stop, but instead of renting an entire airplane, you might have a seat on an airplane that would get you a ride to somewhere else, other place in the country. So that might be out there sometime in the future.
Is that like a NetJets or something like that?
I'm sorry?
Is that like NetJets?
Well, NetJets is charter. And I think in that case, you actually buy part of, you buy time on an aircraft. So that time then would be for a specific aircraft, and you'd have it all to yourself at that point.
So that's what changes scheduling compared to non-scheduling?
They would not be scheduled.
But that changes everything if you start scheduling flights? That's what I mean?
Yes, yes, it does. That's everything that goes along with that, a much more restrictive airport like an RDU. You can't, you can't drive on that, on that property. You can't, there are a lot of things you can't do, plus all the life safety kinds of things that... No, that's not to say we don't pay attention to that. The TSA comes out there every year. Homeland Security talks to us, and they're always looking at things going on at various airports across the state and probably across the country. So we do have a certain amount of security out there, but nothing like what an RDU, Charlotte Douglas, or PTI has.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Lovick.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Koenig?
No.
Commissioner Vorbek?
No questions. Thank you for that, Dave.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
No, but thank you for clearing up that eminent domain piece.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, no questions, but when I did come out there for my tour, it was quite impressive.
Yeah, I still think, thank you for saying that. It's unbelievable. We've been there over 20 years, and there are still people that come across the railroad track and say, oh, my goodness, didn't know this was here. And they've lived in Lee County their entire lives. So we want to impress, and we want to continue that. And honestly, without all the support locally and state and FEDS, it would have never happened. So thank you again.
And Bob, I want to say thank you. The family day, we got there late because we had a soccer player. But you gave us a personal tour, and the nephew just couldn't believe how much he was front and center on the tour. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. We have Young Eagles coming up here in the next month, and that'll be an opportunity for maybe 100 kids, between the ages of 18, and get their first experience on an aircraft. So, okay?
Did our, did our youth council member get that to pass on? We thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Can we take a 10-minute break? We're going to take a 10-minute break, Marshall. If you put the timer up there for us, please. We're going to take a 10-minute recess. Did our, did our youth council member get that to pass on? We thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Can we take a 10-minute break? We're going to take a 10-minute break, Marshall. If you put the timer up there for us, please. We're going to take a 10-minute recess.
...
Community safety, health and well-being, partnerships, education, and economic development. So while keeping that in mind, I will turn it over to Ms. Brayboy.
Good evening, commissioners. First of all, as Autumn said, my name is Christie Brayboy and I'm the reentry services coordinator for Lee County government. If you would, our agenda discusses what is the meaning of our reentry mission? The local reentry council? Who is the intermediary agency? The local executive committee? The local advisory committee? Local service providers? Subcommittee? Local reentry council member examples? The local reentry structure? And we're also going to discuss the governance structure. Lee County's mission is to transition justice-involved individuals into the community, reduce recidivism rates, improve public safety, and link justice-involved individuals to resources and services in the community. The idea is to address those barriers to medical and mental health, employment, housing, education, vocational training, transportation, and any other issues surrounding their quality of life. What is a local reentry council? It's an organized network of individuals and agencies from different disciplines working together, and they all have a significant interest in providing supervision and coordination of our response to how we reintegrate justice-involved individuals and formerly incarcerated individuals at the local level. So you may ask, who is the intermediary agency? The intermediary agency is the agency responsible for administrative support, coordination, and implementation of the local reentry council. This is the person that... Or the agency that serves as the liaison between the Department of Adult Correction and the local reentry council. The intermediary agency will have a local reentry coordinator. This person is responsible for the day-to-day delivery of reentry services. This person serves as the lead case manager. This person is also responsible for developing partnership agreements, coordinating the referral process, and overseeing case management. There's also a case manager. This person's role is to individualize case plans for all justice-involved individuals. This person will link the justice-involved individuals to employment, housing, transportation, vocational training, and any other barriers in the community. The local executive committee. What do they do? The local executive committee is a decision-making body, and they work closely with the intermediary agency to develop the operation, design, implementation, and provide oversight of the comprehensive local reentry plan. The local advisory committee is a wide range of local faith, nonprofit, government, and business leaders in the community who identify resource gaps. And the local reentry makes it possible to fulfill those gaps or find resources in the community, find services in the community to fill those gaps. They are also responsible for reentry education and outreach for the community. Local service providers. These are faith-based community organizations, nonprofits, churches, ministries that offer direct services to justice-involved and formerly incarcerated individuals in the community. These organizations assist with housing, employment, transportation, basic needs, clothing, any other supportive services that a justice-involved individual may need is provided by the local service providers. From those local service providers, we have subcommittees. Subcommittees are created to address barriers that justice-involved individuals will face while returning to Lee County. And the subcommittees conduct assessments to ID the gaps in the council area, develop a strategy for collaboration with the existing resources that we have in Lee County, develop options for creating opportunities to address those barriers, and identify funding and other resources to address those barriers. Who can be members of the reentry council? The local prison facility, community corrections, DJJ, Division of Juvenile Justice. You have the local Division of Workforce Solutions, Public Housing Authority, the local community college, the health department, the social services, vocational rehabilitation services. You also have town representatives, the sheriff's office, the district attorney's office, the clerk of court. You have many people in the community that can be a part of the reentry council, and especially formerly incarcerated individuals. We need those formerly incarcerated individuals to be a part of the reentry council because they understand and they live the life day-to-day and they know the gaps in the services and resources that we have in Lee County. So it is very important that we have formerly incarcerated individuals on our reentry council. As you can see, we have a reentry structure. It's a little small up here. But it gives you the outline of what the local reentry structure looks like. You have the intermediary agency, who is the go-between with the Department of Adult Correction and the local reentry council. The intermediary agency has a local reentry coordinator and also has the case manager who works with the local reentry council to provide services in the community. That's a little small, but you have it in your package. And this is the governance structure, which shows you the local executive committee, and it branches out to show that we interact with the Department of Adult Correction through the intermediary agency. There are service providers in the community and the advisory committee. It shows you that we need community leaders, formerly incarcerated individuals, business owners, faith-based organizations to assist us in the reentry program. And the information was provided by the Department of Adult Correction. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Brayboy? Commissioner Sharp, this is your expertise.
Well, I was just going to say, I used to be involved with stuff like this and I know that you guys will provide a good service and just like the reentry plan that we used to do when I was an officer. So, yeah. Thank you for presenting to us tonight.
Commissioner Reeves?
Just want to wish you good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
I just... Can I clarify what's actually... They're just presenting the idea of doing it? What is on the agenda exactly?
Do you want me to... Let me take that? I can take that. So at this point, what staff wanted to do is bring forth what is a reentry council? So that way the board knows, understands, and is aware. What the ask essentially is going to be is that... Right now, we are just asking staff... Excuse me. Asking the board to authorize staff to move forward with setting up the reentry council, start setting meetings, get the community involved. Eventually, what we will ask is that the board can... When there is funding available from the state through the Department of Adult Correction or through some other department from the state, they will open up an RFP process where you can submit to receive funding. When you do that, what you would be acting as is that Lee County would be the intermediary agency, right? So they would be... We, as the intermediary agency, could receive that funding and that could help hire the positions. I mean, we already have Christie's position currently, but then that could help offset costs from her position and/or potentially the other position that you're required to have, which is the case manager. So really, right now, it's just information. Ask the board to say, yes, it's okay to move forward, to start holding meetings. Because my understanding is from the state, they would like to be able to come in and basically see the council already up and running. This will not run like your other boards and commissions. Once the board says, yes, move forward, Christie can start gathering individuals to be on the executive committee, start getting the community support for council members. The executive committee will most likely have one of the commissioners on that committee. But once that council's formed, it runs itself, right? So it becomes its own council. So it has its own bylaws. It's not like our planning board where we're appointing members each year. So we understand that right now, there's not any funding available. However, Ms. Brayboy's already doing the job, already providing these services. You know, that whole department is doing these things. So we just would like to go ahead and move forward with starting to hold meetings, be up and running. So that way, if the money does become available, we can say, look, state, we're already doing this stuff.
Is there anyone in the county currently doing this?
Reentry?
Mm-hmm.
There are quite a few actually doing reentry.
Yeah.
Providing reentry services.
Okay. Because I know I was asked to sit in a meeting back in September of 2022. There were at least 40 people in that meeting that have already provided. I kind of feel like part of this is we're going backwards. I mean, there's a lot of people that have spent at least the last two years already meeting with the community and getting advice and putting this all together. So I'm just... I guess I'm not quite understanding why we're getting into the game of the reentry completely. Like, why now? And why? What's the purpose if it's already currently being done?
Well, we have Christie who is... I mean, her job is reentry coordination. So she's been working with the jail and the Department of Adult Corrections, getting individuals referrals who are currently in the Department of Adult Corrections that are coming back into our community. So she's working with those individuals. And then we've had conversations with the state that they indicated that some other county governments are the intermediary agencies because we're a consistent, you know, we're local government. And so we're meeting with all those... Working, I believe, working with all those individuals out in the community currently and would just like to be recognized as an official council.
Did the intermediary agency, do they have to front the money before you get the reimbursement from the state?
I don't know.
We're already doing...
We're doing the...
We're funding her position already? I understand we're funding her position, but are we funding anything else that has to go with... We have not made a commitment to fund the case manager position yet. We would have to decide if we're ready to grow our program to that before... Whether or not we do it before we get the official funding from the state or if we wait until we get that notification. It's a matter... That would have to be a budget decision you would make if we decide to grow the department to that level before we get the RFP process and see if we get the funding.
Would this position formally represent Lee County?
When you say position, are you referring to the case manager position?
The entire reentry program.
The Lee County reentry council would represent the entire county, yes.
All right.
And you're not officially recognized until the state recognizes you?
Right.
Commissioner Connect.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions.
No questions?
I would just ask that as we move forward on this, I mean, we do have some agencies within the community that are working this way. They need to be integrated and brought in. So let's not leave them out. They've been doing some good work.
Exactly. And we coordinate with those agencies, nonprofits.
I just... Yeah, okay.
Question?
I just... There's... If this is something we really want to be involved in and it's something we want to be in, I guess, I just feel like why... You're underutilizing efforts that have already been working and been implemented in community meetings that have already occurred for a year and a half. Like, that included people from Salvation Army and Bread of Life and local ministers. And I guess I just don't... I kind of... I guess I just... I would like to know the reason why now.
I can speak for part of this because I know Autumn and I, with Commissioner Carver, and I want to say, did you go with us when we went to Durham to visit their facility and their reentry program? And this is what, two years ago?
Yes, sir.
So we've been moving in this direction as a government agency. And we also have our community agencies and our community nonprofits, as well as some of our churches and faith-based community. So I just want to make sure that, one, we sustain this, we maintain this, and that we focus on bringing those programs that are already out there.
Yes.
You know, I'm thinking of the doctor who has the total package program. She's all... Are you engaged with her?
Yes, and she also does reentry.
Yes, I'm aware of that, yeah. So we're... That's our concern.
I'll offer a motion to move forward, allow the staff to move forward with the program.
Motion's been made to move forward with creating a local reentry council? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have one opposition. Did you get that? We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move forward, do great things. Next item on the agenda is the Duke Energy easement request for Green Hawk Corporation.
All right. The next two items are actually Duke Energy utility easement requests for residential developments on property neighboring county-owned property. The first request is from Green Hawk Development Corporation. This is impacting the Moore Center property. And if you'll please refer to the slides behind you, we have an illustration that depicts where the easement is located. That driveway on the right-hand side is the temporary emergency access easement that has already been approved by the board. And that is the back corner of the gymnastics property where that is located. So this easement would follow the back rear property line of the Moore Center property and is about 30 feet wide, but it would straddle the property line, so 15 feet each side. It's estimated to be about a quarter of acre, a little bit more in size. Here are some pictures from the rear side of the gymnastics property to kind of show you the wooded buffer between the property, along with another illustration of the easement area. And here's an aerial of the easement area as well from the rear of that property. We're still finalizing the documents for the emergency access. But we just wanted to bring some general information to you tonight along with some considerations that have been put together by staff. Developers with Green Hawk Corporation are here tonight as well to answer your questions and provide additional information. Some considerations that we wanted to convey to the board include that this is a permanent encumbrance that's being requested. So the board may want to request an appraisal be conducted to understand the value of the request. Because there is a financing on the property and the property serves as collateral for that financing, we would have to conduct a reporting to the lending agency and trustee. We would need to confirm any plans for the construction project, including access through the property, material staging, and whether or not that would impact the Moore Center gymnastics operations. This would also reduce some of that wooded buffer between the properties, which may increase pedestrian traffic from an unmonitored area. So we're not looking for final approval from the board tonight. What we're looking for is staff's or board's direction on whether or not to proceed with the request. We would need to invest additional time, resources, and probably money if the board wanted us to seek an appraisal to move forward with this. So we wanted to...
Are we expected to pay for this out of our own pockets?
I believe that could be a request of the Board of Commissioners from the developer to compensate for this.
But without agreement to a yes or a no?
That's right. We do not have any commitments in place right now.
What I'm saying is, if they agree to move forward and pay for the cost that occurs us to gather this information, but that doesn't guarantee that we move forward with it. It just gives us the information we're looking for, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to members of Green Hawk Development Corporation. We have Brian and Jeff here, and they have some additional information they're going to provide. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Commissioners. My name is Ben Glass with Green Hawk Corporation. Thank you, Jennifer. I just wanted to expand on her proposal just a little bit. As you can see from the exhibit there up on the board, our company has the former Morelli property residential development that we're planning on that property, which is just north of Lee County-owned land. It's being utilized currently by the community college for the Moore Center. And so if you go to the next slide, the one in yellow... I'm sorry, can I do that? Perfect, thank you. So what you see there is, in orange, the existing routing of the overhead service lines. What we're proposing to do is... Does this have a pointer? Okay. So what we're proposing to do is take that line that's running through what you can see as planned townhomes and run it along our shared property lines. As Jennifer stated, we're requesting a 30-foot easement, 15 feet on our side and 15 feet on county property to relocate those existing overhead lines. And one thing that's pretty unique about this easement request is the power lines that are being relocated are actually in use and serving the current Moore Center. And so what this would do would give Duke Energy the ability to relocate those lines and continue the existing service for the Moore Center. But also, as you may or may not be aware, the community college has some pretty extensive redevelopment plans in the works where they'll need likely some significant power needs. And so what this does is it keeps those three-phase power lines above ground and allows for future expansion and availability for any necessary service. So to answer some of the points that were brought up there by Ms. Gamble, Green Hawk Corporation is prepared to provide any of the financing and services necessary for the appraisal for their land, as well as prepare any easement documents, any coordination with Duke Energy and with the county to take care of this. So there's no work or financial consideration requested from the county.
Questions from Mr. Glass? Commissioner Sharp?
Not at this time, no.
Commissioner Reeves?
Do you have a timeline in mind?
So as Ms. Gamble stated, we're not asking for approval of the easement tonight. We're asking for approval to move forward. And so we would then work with Duke Energy and the county to finalize those easement documents. And then I know we have a representative here from Duke Energy tonight. They're eager to get going. And so what the easement would allow them to do is place it on their schedule, and it would only be a matter of weeks before they would have their work commence. weeks before they would have their work commence.
Thank you.
Something I wanted to add. I did speak with Dr. Chapman, people here, and she has already presented this to the Board of Trustees, and they have no objection to the easement moving forward. So, I just wanted to put...
They have no objections?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbik?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
So, I don't mind moving forward as long as we have the agreement that costs are buried?
Yes, sir.
And there's no guarantee on the outcome, of course. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
I'm just concerned that because we do have a wooded barrier as a buffer, and we're going to lose that from what I understand here, what are, yeah, the density of the wooded barrier, but what, what is the consideration of putting up a barrier? Because I'm concerned about the foot traffic with the Moore Center and the Community College from, you know, you're going to have a development here, you're going to have lots of kids running around.
Yes, sir. If you look back behind you there, I went back to the aerial imagery. And so, the area of easements that's being requested on the county land is 15 feet. So, from the back of that Lee County Gymnastics building, the remaining buffer that would still stand even if the easement is granted, is still 86 feet. And the area of buffer that's from the back of that parking lot to the right there where the emergency access easement starts is 163 feet. So, while you are correct that 15 feet of buffer would be taken, there's still a pretty significant area of buffer remaining after that's done.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes. Please.
I just had a question for Dr. Connect. I think you said you would be fine with moving forward if Green Hawk bear, bear the cost for an appraisal, and then you said, but it's not a guarantee that we would approve it.
Plus, because we're moving forward and asking them to pay for appraisal and any other work that you have to do, that doesn't mean that we're approving going forward with you.
Just so I can prepare accordingly after this meeting.
Okay.
Well, and what we could do, just as a proposal, is we could ask that Green Hawk conduct the appraisal and present it to us as part of their proposal, so we're not expending county funds out the gate before we bring that back to the board. Would that be amenable?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Have a motion to move forward for the consideration of the appraisal and follow-up. Motion's been made. We're moving forward with allowing staff to work on the appraisal.
We'll work with Green Hawk to get that performed and work on review of the easement documents to bring back that proposal and documents for the board's final approval.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thanks for the time this evening.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And Jennifer, next one?
Yes. All right. The next easement request is related to neighboring property to the Lee County Athletic Park site, and this is from D.R. Horton, and it's related to Ashby Village. So, we've got an illustration behind you to the left. I know it's a little bit small, but total encumbered area proposes approximately 1,220 linear feet by 30 feet wide. The entire 30-feet width is proposed to be on county-owned property. So, here's a depiction of the construction plans from the Athletic Park site. You can see on the right-hand side, this 30-foot easement area does impact a portion of the wetland area and wooded buffer. And then, again, some considerations related to this easement request. This one's a little bit more involved because we have a construction currently in progress. So, we did confirm that the site plan would need to be updated to represent the easement in place, and that would require a staff review by planning. The estimated value to update that site plan is about $3,000, and that would need to be conducted by McAdams, who is the engineer for the Lee County Athletic Park site. Again, we don't know if planning would have any comments related to the update in the site plans related to the buffer or wetland territory. We would need to have further investigation into that. There's implications due to the reduction of the wooded buffer. So, reducing that wooded buffer could increase pedestrian traffic from an unmonitored area of the site. The front of the site is going to be gated, so that could be a concern. This is a, again, a permanent encumbrance on the property, so the board may want to consider requesting an appraisal be conducted on this easement area as well. This also, because of the financing, requires a reporting to the trustee of the financing. And then, we would need, again, to confirm any plans related to the construction or material staging, any access requested through the site, and how that would impact the project. So, at this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to Tom McKay with D.R. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am Tom McKay. I'm working currently with D.R. Horton on acquisition and entitlement and other issues. I got involved in this project late in the day because I was working on a lot of other things on other projects. It's kind of unique in that this required easement touches several different properties and not just, just the counties. It might be interesting to note that the property to the north, we have already spoken with and have a handshake agreement on where we're proceeding to do that. The property to the south, which is the Pine Village community, much of that easement is already in place. There's a small portion of it missing kind of in between it and where we were asking for with regard to the county's property. If you will also notice a red line that's going straight through the middle of the Ashby Village project. That is an existing line that we are trying to move, and you can see that it's an impediment to the continued development of that community. We have partial approval, and we're in a grading stage, and we're working to finalize everything, but at the same time, if we can't do it with that power easement in the way. If we take this route, we've tried to take the most or least impacting route without hopefully causing any undue damage or harm to the county's sport complex plan. Fortunately, what we're requesting is in the area that is not planned for any specific development. And the reason that we asked for the 30-foot to be totally on the county's side is because that leaves us enough room on our side of the line to do some extensing buff, extensive buffering that is actually currently called for in the county's plan for the sports complex. And we would openly take that obligation on, over on our property. If we tried to straddle the line, we end up with not really enough land to even plant a buffer. So, that was our reason for requesting that it all be on the county's side, as well as the fact that we don't think it's impacting anything that's a usable part of what the county's plan is. In fact, I found it kind of curious that the landscape plan called for buffer plantings within 15 feet of the property line on the county's side, which would actually be clearing something to put a buffer in. So, what our thought process was, if we would fund all the landscape buffering on our side of the line, it would provide a much better buffer, a thicker buffer. As you're coming, driving down that future parkway, you wouldn't see power lines and stuff as much. And the other part would be on the backside of eight of our lots, which is a, which is a small concession. We look quickly at the wetland issues that are already documented there, and in the larger-scale plans that I've looked at, we can pretty well avoid working in that wetlands. We think we can cross it perpendicularly and not have to place any power poles in the well in itself, which is a, which is a big advantage. So, and the other thing this does, it gives a better cross-connection between Broadway Road and Old Highway 421 to get better overall service for the whole area. So, that is basically the basic, basic conditions of what we're asking for. And again, our request is not to approve this tonight, but we know there are a lot of people involved, and we want to be able to get every, all the team players involved in this together. We know staff has to look at it. We know that the site plan for the sports complex has to be evaluated. We've committed so far the cost of what we've done in surveying and exploration and engineering requests, and are happy to continue that, to funding that effort. And we respectfully ask permission for county staff to begin exploring this with us together and see if we can come to a conclusion that we all can live with and be proud of. Thank you very much.
Questions for Commissioner Lovick? Questions for Mr. McKay?
I don't think I have any for him, but I'm going to ask Jennifer some when she comes back up.
She can come back up.
And I'm going to walk this before I make a vote, for one thing. And I will, I will talk to my buddy over at the power, so I'm going to get up with him, and I'd like, if anybody else, we need to look at that before I vote anyway. But, speaking of the wetland, is it usable wetland, or is it unusable? Or has that been judged? In other words, if we come up with something in the future for that part of the...
Like the tree way or something like that?
Right. Is it?
We have a Development Services Director here. He may be able to speak to future plans for that area. I can't recall off the top of my head.
Okay. Before he gets there, how much buffer, if we put the 30-foot right away, and how much buffer of trees or whatever would we still have?
That would be part of the planning review and the comments that we would need to see as far as the trade-off if this gets installed, what we would need to put back or try to keep in place.
Okay. And one more. I don't think so, but I just want to make sure. Were we planning on fencing the entire park?
We do not have plans to fence the entire site.
Or that area or anything.
That's correct. We, I think the intention is to make sure that wooded buffer keeps some of that in place. And we do have the gate at the front of the site, but we do not have security along the complete border of the property.
Okay.
That, that area is the nature trail. So, you can see the walking trail back there. So, that is the untouched part of the park. I mean, there's some that they're planning, but there's a buffer, but that is the nature trail, the walking trail in that back corner.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Same thing applies, costs.
Commissioner Vorbik?
This was just a 30-foot easement for buffer, not utility, correct?
No, this is for power utility.
It is for power and utility.
Similar to the last one, except this is 30 feet completely on our property versus the last one was splitting the property line.
So, power and utility poles? Is that what I'm...
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Seven wires, seven.
Question?
It's seven wires, two feeders and a neutral.
Okay.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have any.
Okay, do we give guidance, do we have a motion to give guidance to staff to move forward?
I'll make a motion.
A motion's been made to move forward, giving staff the, all of that long list of things they've got to do. Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
And that includes the cost being incurred.
Okay, similar to the last request that we're...
Costs being incurred.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Motion been made. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to managers' report, monthly financial reports. We have Candace Isman here.
Good evening. The reports included in your agenda this evening are for the November sales tax collections and January monthly financial reports. Sales tax collections are at 3.06% out of the same period last fiscal year, and the target percentage used for expenditures in the monthly financial report for January is 58.33%. If the encumbrances are excluded from the calculation, there are no departments over budget at this time.
IT is relieved. Where's Marshall? Questions for Candace? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Vorbik?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Lovick?
Thank you.
I'll be glad when Commissioner Carver's back. Moving on, strategic plan report out. That would be the clerk to the commission.
Good evening, Commissioners. You all have a copy of the Quarter One Report at your seats, and I won't read off everything for the sake of time, but I would like to note that we do have items in all of our areas and all but one of our goals. So, that is very exciting. And then, I did want to give just a quick little update on where we're at in regards to our new strategic plan that we'll, we're working on, starting that process. We think with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, we were waiting on information and some plan examples from them. We actually received that today, though, so staff just needs to, our next steps is to review what we've received, schedule another meeting with them, and report back to you all with where we're at, and if you would like to move forward with them, or look for a new vendor, or work with our existing one, Esperant Solutions. So, it might not be the next meeting that we come back to you, but in the near future.
Okay. Questions for Haley? Commissioner?
No questions. Just thank you for keeping us up to date and keeping an active strategic plan going.
Commissioner Connect?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Vorbik?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
I'm good.
Commissioner Sharp?
No, sir.
I just want to say, give us a breakdown. The North Carolina Association County Commissioners will provide us a strategic plan process?
Yes. So, they will help us, we need to let them know what we are needing. So, we were, staff had been discussing like a full facilitation, the association providing that facilitation piece, and also putting that plan together for us.
And at what cost?
There is no additional cost beyond our annual dues.
Annual dues.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I like the sound of that. No further questions. Thank you very much. And county managers' report?
I'll try to go through this relatively quickly because we've been here a long time tonight. On the athletic park construction... Yes. Construction continues to progress in stages at the Lee County Athletic Park. Their current focus is on earthwork and grading and sewer installation. Stormwater system installation is planned next. Department of Environmental Quality is in the process of reviewing water utility plans. Once those plans are approved, installation of water infrastructure can begin. We're also getting approvals for a permanent driveway permit for the, so that we can get the issuance of the building permit and zoning approvals for the site. Zoning and building permits will be submitted as soon as DOT approvals are granted. NC DOT indicated approvals should be issued no later than the week of February 12th. However, these approvals are delayed, this could cause construction delays. Supplier for field lighting will be on-site in February to coordinate installation with site construction, and you approve some change orders on February 5th and the, for the well abandonment and the retaining wall, and for us to do owner-purchase site lamp poles. So, those, we're now working with the construction administrator and general contractor on those, and we also have some potential remaining change orders that will be coming to you. But right now, we're working through those with Sanford Contractors and McAdams to reduce the cost as much as possible to the county. Phase one and two of Parks Projects at the Kiwanis Children's Park and Temple Park. Temple, the bathroom construction is nearing completion. Final inspection has been done. Concrete has been installed to connect the bathroom shelter and playground with existing sidewalk on-site. Also installed a drainpipe and topsail around the playground. We also want to note, this is in addition to what's in your report, in your agenda, we also, repairs are being made by staff to the drainpipe due to damage to the pipe and stormwater collection. So, Commissioner Smith pointed out there was some standing water and Jennifer and...
It was a water feature being used by a large number of kids.
So, Jennifer and Joseph Keel went out and looked at that and determined what was going on, and they are making repairs to that. So, right now, the utility connections, water, sewer, and power remain the outstanding items for that... So right now, the utility connections, water, sewer, and power remain the outstanding items for that project. Kiwanis Children's Park and OT Sloan, we're in phase two of those. We were out to bid. The bid opening date was on February 15th. We only received two bids on each of those projects that day, so we are having to put that back out to rebid. And so that will be coming up in the next few weeks for your consideration. The library building project, construction documents are currently in the past 80% complete. We are working with Vines and Sammet and Sanford Contractors, our CMR, to try to get the project into, into our cost range. And we are anticipating going out to bid in the spring, and we have started also working on the financing calendar for that project. The outside sewer connection for the new library site went out to bid on February 1st and closes on February 28th. I think we've covered all that. Storied Courthouse, we're continuing to work with the state and various, and our architect to get that project out to bid and moving. The feasibility study for the jail, we're looking at completion in mid-March, and, excuse me. So that may be moved to March, beginning of April, okay? But we're still working on that. Comprehensive fire study and long-range plan, one-on-one visits with each chief, along with visits to each station to evaluate facilities, apparatuses, and equipment have been conducted. The consultant has requested to have an opportunity to speak with each commissioner and the county manager. I did my conversation with them last week. They were very positive about the involvement of the different fire departments, and so things are moving along well. They have sent out cor, we have sent out correspondents asking for y'all to, or for each of you to meet with them. If you've not scheduled that at this point, if you would please reach out to Jennifer Gamble and let her assist you with getting that scheduled so that we can keep this project moving. I know Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Reeves are scheduled. I don't know if anybody else has scheduled it. Commissioner Lovick has also scheduled his. So if you've not, please reach out. It doesn't take long. It's a very easy conversation, I found, with them, so. And at your seat, you will, should have your renew brochure and the brochure for the fundraising that we would, y'all authorized for the athletic park and the library. If you would like more brochures, you can see Haley tonight, or Ben, and they can provide you more copies of the fundraising brochure. And if you would like more of the renew brochures to hand out, we can also get those to you. So, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if you had any. Commissioner Connect on the brochures? No.
Question?
They look good. The staff has done an excellent job, Ben and Haley, and the staffs of those two divisions that are working on those all helped to put that together. And along with, and we've also received comments and assistance from Saga. And they are helping us make the, some of the connections to the businesses in all, in Lee County to get those out. So we appreciate their assistance on that. Only other thing, you've got various reports in your agenda package. I do want to make one correction on the upcoming meetings and events. Both of our March meetings will be at the McSwain Center. We had the first one correct, but the March 18th meeting will be at the McSwain Center instead of here at the Civic Center. And then August 8th through the 10th will be the NCAA C-C annual conference that will be in Forsyth County. If you're planning on attending, if you will go ahead and let Haley know that, we would certainly appreciate it. And I believe that's it.
Questions for Lisa? Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you. No questions over here.
Okay, well, let's move into Commissioner comments. Before I do that, I understand the attorney has to give us some comments.
Yes, sir. Just for the board's record and knowledge, last Tuesday, Ms. Knoll and myself went to the City of Sanford workshop session where, if, if you all recall, our memorandum of agreement that we have signed with North Carolina Department of Justice with the opioid settlement funds. We do have to hold one annual meeting with our municipalities. It was our understanding that the, we, we are going to go. Staff has, is going to those municipalities to have an update and a conversation with them. So we went to the city council workshop, presented to their board. Angelina gave an overview of the strategic plan. I went through the funding resolution that the board has adopted and then updated tonight for a technical error, correction, a technical correction, and provided some feedback. They were appreciative of that. Some of their questions that they had were, how are we going to track metrics? And as we start to spend the funding, we will have to, in fact, track metrics. So staff is working on what that will look like because we will have to provide many reports to the state. So I just wanted the board to know that we had that conversation. We told them that we have the website available. They're more than welcome to submit feedback either through the website or to one of us if they have suggestions or ideas. That this is a very much fluid as we move forward over the next 18 years with what we do with this funding. Then we are set to go this coming Monday to the town and Broadway to present at the, their council meeting. So I just wanted to let the board know that.
Thank you. Commissioner Lovick, Commissioner comments?
Let's remember Commissioner Carver and our thoughts and prayers, his continued recovery. I'd like to announce, and I told some of you in advance, the clerk to do a proclamation. The Southern Lee Young Men, we'll call them. So they're combined 3A, 4A conference this year, so they're playing 4A schools. And, but they went last Friday and won the state championship. It's been the first state championship in our county in a long time for a team sport. And as lo, as well as the individual men's champion, he placed first in that, too. So we have the conference champ, or state champion, men's individual, and the team. And early voting's going on. Get out and vote. And hopefully, we'll have some good news for our upcoming project, Bio Bloom. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
I'm good tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
Hope everyone has a good evening.
Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have anything.
Well, everybody has in front of them the Lee County Veteran Town Hall, hosted by the Lee County Veteran Services, scheduled for March 13th at 3:00 p.m. at the Lee County Enrichment Center. And the Fayetteville Healthcare System Executive Director, Mary Fryer, will be there. And I can have nothing but good things to say about VA healthcare past couple of weeks, so we'll leave it at that. Just so you know, we've had some off-ad hoc meetings with the school board regarding finances and the future. And one of the things that were brought to our attention is that the school's ESL program, English as a Second Language, the state and the federal government funds them for 10% of the student population. Once it goes beyond 10%, the school has to rob Peter to pay Paul in order to make up the difference of ESL for their students. And right now, we are at 17%. So 7% of the ESL students, the school system has to literally take from other budget sites to cover this cost. Now, in light of the fact that we're getting a lot of undocumented so-called students, we don't know the number. You're not allowed to know the number, but I foresee that this 17% will definitely grow. As you recall, when we had a workshop a few years ago, I believe there's 33 different languages that Lee County Schools has to endure with students who are using English as a second language. So I'm going to ask that we model a resolution after the school board to send up to both our legislators at the state and the federal level, simply because of the nature of, it hinders our budgeting requirements, but at the same time, we're required to provide these services stipulated by state and federal laws. Friday, I have made arrangements to take a tour of the Lee County Athletic Park. So if anyone's interested in joining us, 11 o'clock Friday at the Athletic Park, where, where the trailer is going to be at.
Because we're probably planning to take you out with the gator, so.
Oh, scheduling the separate appointments because the gator doesn't have enough feeding space?
That's right.
I got it. Thank you. Withdraw my invitation and take it upon yourself to visit.
Bring your own gator.
Just get with Jennifer and Brandon. They'll make the appointment.
You mentioned a resolution the school board has crafted?
I haven't gotten it yet. I did ask them for it, but we met last week on that.
I'd like to see it in advance.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll definitely do that.
All right.
Other than that, may I recommend that you, if you get a chance, to visit the school board on YouTube or their website regarding their last meeting. Their budget request is going to be substantial, and you probably need to understand the nature of that. So if you have a chance to do that. I have nothing further.
Motion adjourned.
Motion's been made to adjourn. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we're now adjourned. Thank you. And I want to say thank you, staff.